Fifteenth, two thousand twenty, Columbus City Council will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, Nebraska Revised Statute eighty-four dash fourteen oh seven. Current copy of this act is posted in the meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll? Here.
Augustine Schulte?
Here.
Barr?
Here.
Heimer?
Here.
Jablonsky?
Here.
Creshaw?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Roth?
Here.
Schilling?
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mr. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other, as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare blazed over the sea near gave proof through the night that her flag was still there. Oh, say does the star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. If at any time during the meeting anyone would like to address the council, we'd ask you come forward, give your name and your address, and we'd ask you limit your comments to five minutes or more. Then I would say, "Welcome." It's nice to be back in our friendly confines of the council chambers. It's nice to be back on TV for the public. I hope all of you survived the COVID- nineteen up to this point. You can see that we have reconfigured our formation so that we can be in compliance with social distancing. We have much less capacity for the public behind us or in front of us. And these are things that we'll continue to do as the DHM spell that out. But it's so good to be back in the real world here, doing things that make us feel comfortable and being able to serve you. With that, we'll go to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item four A, minutes of the June first, two thousand twenty city council meeting. Item four B, minutes of the June first, two thousand twenty Community Development Agency meeting. Item four C, minutes of the June ninth, two thousand twenty Civil Service Commission meeting, certifying the following firefighter EMT hazardous materials technician candidates, Aaron Perez, Thomas All, and Ty O'Brien. Item four D, resolution number R-two-zero dash six-three authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item four E, Title III B, supportive services. Title III C, nutritional services. Title III E, family caregiver support services. Grant funding from Northeast Nebraska Area Agency on Aging for Activities Meals and Caregiver Support Services at the Community Center. Item four F, bid from Central Sand and Gravel Company for a one-year supply of gravel in the amount of twenty-two yards or twenty-two dollars per cubic yard, delivered or seventeen fifty-five per cubic yard if picked up. Item four G, reappointment of Adam Yerkowski and Ron Schilling to the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District Council of Officials for a one-year term. Item four H, appointment of Charlie Barr to the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District Board of Directors for a one-year term and waive the two-week waiting period. Item four I, finance department reports. And item four J, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council, is there anything you would like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move the items on the consent agenda, being routine in nature, be approved as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. That will bring us up to public hearings.
Item seven A, public hearing, application of Columbus Retail LLC for special use permit to allow convenient storage in a B-two general commercial district zone located at thirty-six, twenty, twenty-third street. This has been, um, this was continued from the May eighteenth meeting. The planning commission has recommended approval.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Um, yes, my name is Connor Works, and I am with Columbus Retail LLC.
All right, this is Connor Works, and he's with Columbus Retail LLC. I'm repeating that, Connor, to make sure our audience can hear you.
One day. Um, yes, it's located in the B-two zoning district. Um, the plan for the rest of that redevelopment is a call center in part of it and self-storage as well as some retail. Um, and I would be happy to answer any questions any of you might have on it.
I don't believe there is any public questions.
Mr. Mayor, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven A-one, ordinance number two-zero dash zero-seven, approving the special use permit.
May I recommend the rules be suspended and ordinance number twenty-dash-zero-seven be read by number only?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number two-zero dash oh-seven by number only? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number two-zero dash zero-seven.
May I recommend ordinance number two-zero dash zero-seven be adopted?
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two-zero jet, two-zero dash zero-seven. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B, public hearing, application of ECA LLC for a planned unit development, PUD, in an R-one single-family residential district zone located at, located west of Forty-first Avenue at Eleventh and Twelfth Streets. The planning commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Hear me through this or not? Good evening, Andrew Willis, Klein Williams, on behalf of the applicant. Really, this PUD would do two things. Reduce the side setbacks from ten feet to seven feet. Reduce the rear yard setbacks from twenty-five feet to twenty feet. Um, when the applicant came in for the subdivision, the, the twenty lots, they were looking at how to, they really needed those, uh, lower set, the reduced setbacks. So they looked at possibly changing zoning, but it just made more sense to do a PUD where that's the only restriction changed, everything else is still R-one underneath. So that's the reason behind that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. At, at the risk of looking foolish, can you explain to me why this can be done on these lots? Why that could be done on lots that we did out to the east that you had nothing to do with? But we can't do it on single lots? The contractor, our contractors come in and they want to change the setbacks, and they're told flatly, "No, we can't do that."
And I, I assume that's because it's a planned unit district overlay, so it's a, it's a larger area. I'm not sure right on, like, what the minimum size is, but it's got to be in the code, that's the reason why. It's just, it's done on a, a larger basis rather than a lot-by-lot basis, I would assume.
Okay, because I keep getting that, that, well, either you guys let him do anything. That contractor can do whatever he wants. He doesn't follow anything, the inspector doesn't even go there. And I know that's not true.
Yeah, and the, I mean, the, 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 the policy behind it, the reasoning behind it is, is that, you know, you're taking that larger piece, and rather than, again, like, in this case specifically, rather than changing zoning or doing something like that, you're doing this overlay district on top. And it doesn't, I would say, it doesn't really make sense to do an overlay on a single lot where you're just reducing the, the, the setbacks on a single lot. Um, because, because again, there's still uniformity amongst this entire subdivision, though.
Legitimately, what it does is allow them to build approximately four hundred more square feet per lot, raising the cost of the property by about seventy thousand dollars.
Or in the long run, maybe get another home into the...
Possibly, yeah, or, or just, it, it, I think it allows for different designs. That's the main thing, is it allows for some different design, uh, some flexibility on design there.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Jablonsky.
I guess I'm curious why this didn't come up in the original application. Uh, this is where we get in a little bit of trouble, uh, when we keep dragging these projects back and say, "Oh, by the way, now we want setbacks, now we want to do this, now we want to do that." And so in Charlie's comments, that's what comes back to us. Why, why are we allowing this to happen? So can you explain why this didn't come in your original, original plan?
I, I don't have a good answer for that. Yeah, but, I mean, other than, there, there is a planned unit district overlay as part of, of the code, so this isn't, this is a acceptable, uh, zoning application, but...
Can you see our, our, our side of this?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well. This creates, just, uh, the, the public doesn't see it down there.
Understood. Yeah, no, and I think I can, I, I could, I can definitely talk to our, you know, the app, I mean, obviously, not in this case. It's too late, but I understand, that does make more sense.
Well, and obviously, the cleaner can be coming to us from day one.
Certainly.
Number one, the quicker it will get through and the less comments that will be made, especially against it possibly.
Yeah.
So it's only in the applicant's best interest if we can do that.
Yep, understood.
All right, uh, any other comment?
Where else have we done this?
Out at the houses that were just recently built by the Armory.
By the Armory?
Yes, sir.
Was Dana Point, was that one of those where we did the duplexes where we cut back?
That was...
I don't know, where's Dana, where's Dana? I'm sorry?
The duplexes on Fifty-third and Avenue, those, those houses over there for a PUD, they, they got it.
Okay.
Fifty-third duplexes.
Westbrook?
One by Westbrook, yeah.
Dana Point, they had those, they'll, they'll go in. They shaved off a bunch of them. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll be in the COVID update.
I was going to say, I do, I was going to say, I do believe some of those recommendations are coming forward in the new...
Getting a little bit off topic, but as you all know, we're working on the land development ordinance update, and we've done lots of research, and the standard for side yards seems to be five to seven. We're currently ten as our minimum, so allowing seven, I don't think is out of line, and staff is going to recommend that we move to seven with the LDO update.
Okay, that will be a discussion for another night if we want to have it. Okay, any others, any other comments in regard to this? Do I have a motion and a second?
I would move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
I now have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All the, any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seven B-one, ordinance number two-zero dash oh-eight, approving the planned unit development overlay district.
Uh, excuse me. Trying to get over here to my right, my, uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number zero, two-zero dash zero-eight be read by number only?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance two-zero dash zero-eight by number only? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number two-zero dash zero-eight.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the ordinance zero, two-zero dash zero-eight be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two-zero dash zero-eight. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to reports of council committees.
Item ten A, Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee, June ninth, two thousand twenty. Item ten A-one, update of the employee personnel manual. The Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends to the mayor and city council that the update to the employee personnel manual be approved as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this report?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion?
Just, I think what was echoed at the committee, uh, meeting is that they, uh, the work that the staff had worked on this was very diligent, and I think they crossed all the i's and dotted all the t's and whatever that is that I just said. But, uh, I think they should be commended for tackling the project to this size. It's never easy and it's never right. It's, it's a moving target, so I'd just like to thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Councilman Roth.
As Councilman Jablonsky indicated, it's lots of i's, lots of t's. I was disappointed in the first, uh, draft of the, uh, manual. I thought there were lots of inconsistencies and errors in the draft. Fortunately, I was able to, uh, provide some feedback to, uh, the city administrator, who took many of those, uh, comments, uh, to heart and made changes in them. I'm still concerned about a couple of items concerning inconsistencies within the, within the draft. Not enough to, uh, have a nay vote, uh, ultimately. But I was, uh, we need to proofread and proofread and proofread. Love that. Thank you.
Understand your concerns. I was copied on your, your correspondence. I believe that one of the answers were that legal had looked at it, not that that makes it absolutely right, but gave their blessing. And so that's part of moving forward with it. So, uh, with that, we have a motion and a second to adopt. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item thirteen A, application of Big Ten Sports Bar and Grill for an addition to the licensed premises at five-ten East Twenty-third Street for a fifty-foot by seventeen-foot outdoor area.
Mr. Mayor, I move the application of Big Ten Sports Bar and Grill for an addition to a licensed premise be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
This still has to go to the Liquor Commission for approval?
Mm-hmm, yep. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen B, application of Habitat for Humanity for, of Columbus for preliminary plot of New Hope Second Subdivision, Forty-first Avenue, between Thirteenth and Fourteenth Streets. The planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move that preliminary plot of New Hope Second Subdivision be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Anyone in the audience like to comment on this? Otherwise, I think she'll move right on through. It's up to you, you're here. If you want, if not, you don't need to. Okay. Hate to have you come all this way, Rich, and not say, "Oh."
Richard Snyder, Snyder Engineering. Let me just take a second and introduce Lori Peters. She's the executive director for Habitat. Mike Smith, he's a board member. Uh, let's see, who else do we have? I guess that's it. But, uh, we are very concerned about the, uh, affordability of housing here in Columbus. And so we are making an effort to plan ahead, trying to develop a subdivision, uh, for lower-income people. This particular subdivision will consist of fourteen lots. There is twelve of them that'll be R-one and two that'll be R-two. And, uh, everything else complies with your requirements, and so we are happy to try and answer questions.
There's a need, and we're glad you're here to fill it.
Yes.
Rich, uh, what price point are you shooting for?
Let me direct that to Lori.
Okay.
Can you clarify the question?
Uh, what price point are you trying to achieve? Yes.
The sale of the house at this point is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars appraised.
Appraised.
Sell it to our homeowners for about a hundred, a hundred and ten.
That's pretty good. That's great.
Lori, if you, you're going to have to, I mean, if we have much of a conversation, one of you has got to sit and one of you has got to come up. That's how we get you on.
I don't really know much else, though.
Okay. Maybe answer that officially at the mic.
Okay, so our houses right now are appraised at a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We sell them to our homeowners at a, I lost, am I going? A hundred and ten thousand. We put a second deed of trust with the difference on them between the cost of the house and, uh, the appraised value. And if they live there for fifteen years, that's forgiven, if not, they have to pay it back in order to protect the city's investment in the home.
Great.
There you go. Okay.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you for what you do. Appreciate it.
I lead into that plug, okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen C, application of Walmart Incorporated for a Lexington M. Servantes as the manager in conjunction with the liquor license.
Mayor, I move the application of Walmart Incorporated for a Lexington M. Servantes as manager in conjunction with the liquor license be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen D, plan specifications and estimate of cost in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for demolition of the senior center and fire station and authorization to advertise for bids. The plans and specifications are in file in the engineering department.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the plan specifications and estimate of cost for demolition of the senior center, fire station be approved and staff be authorized to advertise for bids.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advertise for bids for the demolition of the senior center fire station. Any discussion? I got to start by telling you, this is great.
I just, yes, we are moving forward with it and also it, just to remind the public and all of you that this cost is incorporated into the costs of the fire station build, so we have money in the budget to do so.
So part, part of the demolition would come straight from the fire station bond issue, but part of it will be part of our budget, was, was a budgeted item because of the senior center. Part, part of it's divided, so, just so the public knows. Awesome, it'd be so, yes, ma'am?
Oh, I have a question. So, uh, is there a, with asbestos, do they have a plan with that, or, I mean, is there...
Yep, we've already done a hazardous material testing in the building, so there is, uh, work that needs to be done ahead of the demolition, but that'll be included, we've got that all lined up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Super.
All right, any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Just, just a thought, are you, is there any intention of saving the bricks?
No.
I've attended many mixers at that building, I'd like to have a brick...
It generally just creates more work.
Go down there, John, wonder.
It just...
Come you to any you want, Mr. Laura.
Take my pick. And haul from the bottom, though.
No, sorry to say, it generally adds more cost and more time to do so.
But I'm sure we could work out something for Councilmen to...
There may be a, a clean pile
Yes.
that we could allow people to pick from.
Awesome.
Just find out where they haul them, and then you can go get them.
There you go.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, the, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen E, request for qualifications for design and construction phase services for the Library Children's Museum and City Hall project.
Mr. Mayor, I move that staff be authorized to advertise for, request for qualifications for design and construction phase services for the Library slash Children's Museum Hall project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the phase services for the Library Children's Museum City Hall project. Any discussion? Seeing none, I would make the comment that this is just the procedure to move forward with the ideas and the concept. Nothing financially would be committed until we would get to a point of having a bond issue on the November election and getting it passed.
Correct.
So if at that point it works and we get favorable passage, we're off and running. If we're not, uh, we've done some homework, but not much else.
Right, the, um, just selection of this, for this type of selection, it takes several months. So just to have that work done ahead of November is, we're just trying to be efficient and have that ready and on the shelf should hopefully, um, it pass in November. But like the mayor said, if it doesn't, no money will be expended, just some staff time to do the interview process.
All right, any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen F, comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. No discussion can be held on this item.
All right, any comments from council members this evening? Seeing none, I made, oh, Councilman Roth.
It's good to be back.
Thank you.
Yes, it is.
I think everybody agrees it's good to be back, we're glad to be back in this venue. Uh, we continued to handle business while we were closed down to COVID, but it's nice to be doing it the normal way again. So with that, we'll move on to resolutions.
Item fourteen A, resolution number R-two-zero dash six-four, approving the special events permit application for events or activities using city-owned property.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R-twenty dash sixty-four be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R-two-zero dash six-four. Any discussion?
I would only say that we brought this public property back in April, I believe, but it's just been sitting on the shelf until we could bring it back forward in this, in this normal setting rather than passing it when we were in our teleconferences.
Pretty straightforward, it lays out the, the necessary requirements. A lot of it's wrapped around liability, needs, and coverage, so, is what it is in today's world.
And it, it reflects what we do today.
Yep. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item fifteen A, ordinance number two-zero dash zero-six, adopting the two thousand twenty City of Columbus Personnel Policy Manual.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number two-zero dash zero-six be read by number only?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to read ordinance number two-zero dash oh-six by number only this evening. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number two-zero dash zero-six.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance number two-zero dash zero-six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two-zero dash zero-six. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye... Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fifteen B, ordinance number two zero dash zero nine, authorizing the issuance of general obligation certificates of participation in an amount not to exceed one million six hundred thousand dollars for refunding of certificates of participation, series two thousand fourteen, to achieve interest cost savings.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number twenty dash zero nine be read by number only.
We have a motion in a second to read ordinance number two zero dash zero nine by number only. Any discussion? I would just make a comment that, okay, Ernie's here.
Cody's.
Cody's here, okay.
If you guys would like Cody to come up, he made the trip.
Because my only comment was going to be, and we want you to come up because you made a great trip to get here. But my only comment was going to be that during this whole pandemic situation, there hasn't been a lot of good things to talk about. And here we have an opportunity to save one point six million dollars by just doing a little bit of refinancing.
How much?
One point six million.
How can we save one point six million when we're only refinancing one point six?
Because if you look at the next one and the next one, you're refinancing about twenty-eight million. So the point being, it's just a great thing to be able to bring forward, bring to the public. And it's good. So Cody, what do you have? Tell us.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Cody Wickham with the A Davidson. It is, I echo the sentiments. It's good to see everybody in person and not be zooming again. Do you want me to talk specifically about this ordinance and then the whole package in front of you?
I would just talk in general terms, and if anybody's got questions, ask it.
Okay, well, it's been an interesting couple of months and no exception for the bond market. We had, right before COVID really launched, on March ninth, we saw an all-time low for municipal bond rates. And about two weeks later, we saw an all-time high. So we saw just really crazy spikes and we weren't sure where it was going to go, if we were going to see an opportunity like this come back in the near future or not. But we've been monitoring these, three of these issues. For going back, both Phil and I were looking at these, I was looking at our savings chart here back as early as March, or yeah, March fourth of two thousand nineteen. This issue and two others that we'll speak of were such short final maturities, final maturities in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-six. So there wasn't a lot of time to recoup interest cost savings. It was really going to take the perfect storm of low rates to be able to recoup much. But we were monitoring and keeping Tara and Heather apprised of any potential opportunities. It wasn't until recently, when we saw this large dip, that we reached out. And it's something that really is quite phenomenal, given the circumstance. So there's the certificates of participation that, again, are very short. But even on one point six million, we're projecting an opportunity to save approximately sixty-nine thousand in net interest cost savings. The general obligation flood control bonds, those are even shorter. That's the two thousand twenty-three final maturity. We're looking at projected savings of around forty-two thousand three hundred twenty. And then your combined utility revs makes up the bulk of your savings. And the reason for that, we've been looking at the two thousand twelve's for quite some time. It was just a small issue. But like all of the bonds for the City of Columbus, you have five-year call features in place. So you can refinance upon the fifth anniversary of when the dated date occurred. And you had three different issues that Phil helped the city with in two thousand fifteen. The two thousand fifteen As and the two thousand fifteen Bs are becoming callable here in July. So we're right in that perfect window. Timing could not have been better. And that par amount on those is the bulk of this. Again, it's approximately fifteen million for the combined utility revs. So we're going to combine the two thousand twelve's, the fifteen As and the fifteen Bs, all into one clean issue. And the projected savings on that is one million five hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So between these three transactions, you're going to condense five issues down into three. And actually, the rates have gotten even a little bit better. So we've got a few more steps that we need to do before we can get to market. Because of the size of the utility revs, we'll be holding a ratings call with Standard and Poor's. That'll take a little bit of time. They're very jammed up, as you could imagine, right now. But as soon as we have that affirmed rating back from S and P, we'll go out to market with all of the issues. And we expect good response from the local banks and individuals, as typically the case with your community. And we can hopefully report some good news here in a few weeks with final rates locked in.
Awesome. Thank you. Any discussion?
Great.
Mr. Lawrence.
Is there a market for long-term bonds carrying about a one point three, four, or five coupon? I mean, is there, do you know if they're going to sell?
Well, so the, a lot of these are short-term, which is good. The combined utility revs are the longest of the group. And, give me one second here. The final maturity is two thousand thirty-five. So because of the size of that issue and because it's rated, they'll be sold with, they'll be sold at premium, at a function of just how municipal bonds can be sold, either sold at premium or with original issue discount. So it's a great question because, no, people, especially insurance companies and these funds that might purchase these bonds, they don't want to have a coupon in their portfolio with a one point one percent. So what the, the way these are sold is they'll be marked up and sold with a three percent coupon or potentially a four percent coupon. And in turn, those investors or purchasers of bonds will pay a premium upfront. So you wind up issuing fewer principal, a smaller, a smaller par amount of the bonds in return for a larger coupon. The net effect or the yield is what produces all of your savings on the sale of the bonds. So you'll likely have three percent, actually, I can tell you what we had. The bond pricing on the combined utility revs actually had some fives. It was a combination of five percent coupons and four percent coupons. And the production or the premium generated was two million seven hundred and two thousand. So you're actually refinancing fifteen, over fifteen and a half million worth of bonds. But your new issue, the principal outstanding, is actually only going to be thirteen million two fifty because of that premium that's generated upfront. So it's a function of selling bonds. But it's a great question. That's how we sell them. Nobody wants those low yields for sitting in their portfolio. Makes the whole thing look bad.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other question, which is totally off-subject. So where's our attorney? Where's he going to wave his sleigh at me? How's Phil Lorenzen doing?
Phil's doing well. You know, he was getting out and traveling a bit and seeing the grandkids and, and then, like everything. You know, he's just kind of been chilled out. But health-wise, he's doing well. Hips feeling better, knees feeling better, so.
I was going to ask the same question. I was going to thank you for your work. But his name kept coming up, so we wanted you to thank Phil, too.
Yeah, I will pass along.
Please do, please do.
Effective yield today versus effective projected yield? What are we looking at? What's our interest rate going from and going to on average?
Yep, that's a great question, too. So the general obligation flood control bonds, those are the ones that are very short. The series two thousand thirteen's, your current average interest rate is a two point eight eight four and the projected new rate is a one point one three two.
Okay.
The certificates of participation, current rate is a three point one two four, projected down to a one point three eight three. And then combined utility revs, your current average interest rate is a three point two five two and the projected net interest cost is a two point three one five. So that one's a little bit higher because you're going out fifteen years, where the other ones are very short-term. So you're going to have some very low rates for the city.
Any other discussion, questions? I apologize. I quickly was totaling up and I came up with twenty-some million and you're, it's like seventeen or eighteen million.
Yeah, it's closer to about eighteen. And with the, it's probably closer to twenty, but with the premium that's expected to be generated, it'll probably be about seventeen, eighteen.
But it still is about a one point six mil.
One point six, hopefully better, yeah.
That's a good thing. All right.
When will we see, when do we see the proceeds from this? How, how long is it going to be to get the cash?
So the flood control bonds and the certificates of participation, we can move a little quicker just due to the size. We don't have to get them rated. So we'll look to hit market, hopefully, you know, after Fourth of July holiday. And again, with the combined utility revs getting on the schedule for Standard and Poor's and typically, it's about a ten-day or ten-business-day turnaround to obtain the rating, but they're a little backed up. So the timeline, I kind of broke out with Tara and Heather, was thinking we would price those in mid-July. That's when the rates would be locked in. And then we would close the issue after the call date, which again is at the end of July. So we've.
Thank you.
Timing's working well.
Thank you, Cody.
You're welcome.
That's great.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none.
One final question.
Yes, sir.
Did the Finance Committee get a chance to look at this prior to coming to the council?
No, we really didn't have time.
Yeah, I think he said something about that window that we're in. And you're able to make any comments you want here or any concerns or discussions are just as open here.
I understand. It's nice to have the committee review these prior, but I understand the time. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number twenty dash zero nine.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance number two zero dash zero nine. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fifteen C, ordinance number two zero dash one zero, authorizing the issuance of general obligation flood control bonds in the amount not to exceed two million dollars for refunding general obligation flood control bonds, series two thousand thirteen, to achieve interest cost savings.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number twenty dash ten be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to read ordinance number twenty dash ten by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number twenty dash ten.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number twenty dash ten be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance number two zero dash one zero. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item fifteen D, ordinance number two zero dash one one, authorizing the issuance of combined utility revenue refunding bonds in an amount not to exceed seventeen million five hundred thousand dollars for refunding of combined utility revenue bonds, series two thousand twelve, series two thousand fifteen A and series two thousand fifteen B, to achieve interest cost savings.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number two zero dash one zero be read by number only.
One one.
One one? Okay, one one.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to read, adopt ordinance number two zero dash one one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion pass.
Ordinance number two zero dash one one.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance number two zero dash one one.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance number two zero dash one one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their third reading.
Item seventeen A, ordinance number two zero dash zero four, approving text amendments to Article thirteen of the zoning code. As you'll see, the recommended motion is to continue this third reading of both this text amendment and seventeen B. As Gene and Dan Curtis and I finished up our edits after we received comments from a couple companies that will be affected by these. So we spent many hours re-looking at everything and making some updates. So we're recommending we continue the third reading so that those people have adequate time to review the changes.
So you're asking for this to be tabled or continued?
Continued.
So you need a motion to continue, please?
Mr. Mayor.
I move that we continue this to the, what, July sixth meeting, two thousand twenty?
Second.
Can we do both together, A and B, or we have to do each one?
Just this one first.
Just this one first. We have a motion in a second to continue ordinance number two zero dash four zero to our July.
Six.
Sixth meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item seventeen B, ordinance number two zero dash zero five, approving text amendments to Article fifteen of the zoning code.
Same thing with this, right?
Mr. Mayor, we move twenty dash oh five to continue at the seven PM meeting on July sixth.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to move, continue ordinance number two zero dash oh five to the July sixth meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to consideration of payroll and bills on file.
Item eighteen A, ARL Credit Services.
Mr. Mayor, I request to abstain from voting on this agenda item because I have a conflict of interest because I'm owner of ARL Credit Services.
Mr. Mayor, I move Councilmember Jablonski be allowed to abstain from voting on this agenda item. And the rules requiring him to leave the council chamber during discussion and vote be suspended.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move the bill from ARL Credit Services be approved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the bill from ARL Credit Services. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.